Malin, would it say happy birthday to you?
They like his birthday.
I mean, they like, but it'd be alright, might as well.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to pray in this place. I think the chair will. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you so much for the people that are willing to serve our communities. God, we pray blessing upon each and every one of them. And God, we pray for this meeting. God, that everything will be done in order and according to your divine will. And Father, we thank you for everybody that's here for showing concern of our community. And Father, we just pray that you'd continue blessing this community of ours, God, and that your will be done in each and everything that happens. Father, we pray for the safety of all of our community. God, most importantly, we ask your forgiveness of when we fail you. And God, we'd always strive to do better today than we did yesterday. These things are asked of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I am with you. To the life of the United States of America and the new republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
John Horton.
Here.
James Woody.
Here.
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Mark Evans.
There.
U S Conans.
Here.
Samantha Trenton. Daniel Leo.
Here. Here.
First on the agenda tonight is an appointment in each other's.
On the great groups. Second.
Motion by John. And second by Jeremy. Very good. Welcome.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
John Wood.
Yes.
James Woody.
No.
Greg Brooks.
Five.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Uh, U S Conans.
No.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Daniel Leo.
Yes.
Jeremy King.
Yes.
Six yes, two no.
Motion to approve. Mary Mary Church. Congratulations.
Bad one, that's all. Next on the agenda, appointment of vice chairman.
Make a motion to appoint John Horton.
Second. Got a motion by Daniel and a second by. Roll call.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
John Horton.
Pass.
James Woody.
No.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Oh.
U S Conans.
No.
Samantha Trenton.
No.
Daniel Leo.
Yes.
And Jeremy King.
Yes.
Four yes, four no, and one pass.
John. Candace Grant, come for a candle, but that, that motion didn't pay. I'll only change it.
U S Conans. For. James Woody. That's true.
How that one does last year. Uh. Pass.
John Wood.
No.
James Woody.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
No.
Samantha.
Yes.
Daniel Leo.
No.
Jeremy King.
No.
We've got one, two, three passes, one, two, three, four no's. Two yeses. Oh, nominated. My second.
What was it, not a purpose there?
Debbie.
I'll say.
Who?
I say.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
U S Conans.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Daniel Leo.
No.
Jeremy King.
Pass.
Five yeses, two passes, and one no.
Moving on, approval minutes, brief this meeting.
Make a motion to approve unapproval.
Got a motion by John, a second by Daniel, ring discussion. Roll call.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
John Wood.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
U S Conans.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton. Daniel Leo.
Yes.
Yes.
Next is approval, approval of the post office. Motion to approve. Got a motion by John, a second by Daniel, ring discussion. Roll call.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
John Wood.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
U S Conans.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Daniel Leo.
Yes.
Yes.
Next is approval of notaries. We've got Candace Prince from Copper Hills, Laura Crawford from Duck Town, Richie Brown from Turtle Town, Ashlyn Wilson from Old Fort, Stephanie Hodges from Benton.
Make a motion to approve.
Please.
Got a motion by Daniel and a second. But you mark, but mark. Any discussion?
Yes, I have some. I know usually this is cut and dry. But, uh, there's two that I have a question on. One of them is the Candace Prince, which has nothing to do with them, probably just a mistake, but it's a mistake that needs to be verified. Where it's got notary name that has Candace in print, and it clearly says, be, hello, that says print name that you will use when notarizing documents must match signature below, and then she signed it Candace in turn. Also, another one, uh, the law, or the code has that if a notary publicly moves such notary residence or principal place of business out of the state, that principal business, you know, place of business out of the state. This one has a, uh, business in, uh, Blue Ridge, and she's asking for a notary public. Now, that's in question there for whether you want to follow the code or not.
Which one was that, James?
That there's, uh, Rachel Brown.
I know we've done it before in different counties, but I don't think we ever had one in two different states, so I don't know how that.
Well, the question is, is she using it for her business, or is she going for local use? I mean, her business may be in different states, but that's not what she's asking for. So this is a secret. I'm not sure, you know, Tennessee's weather. I said, she's using it in Tennessee, she's good. If the business is in this state, she's using it.
Well, that's what I'm, what I'm questioning. If the code says if, if it's a principal business, if you work for her in another state, then you can't be a notary in Tennessee. So what would be the purpose of being a notary in Tennessee if you're in Florida, working?
When is those two in question? Their license, when does it expire?
One of them's a new one. The other one is too, matter of fact, because both of them are new.
And we've also got one more, Diane Burris, from, uh, Benton, Tennessee, short. Department of Education, and that shouldn't be in question.
Definitely the one here where she signed it wrong should be sent back. Let her correct it before we approve it. Because she does have two different names on it. Now, the other one that I, I questioned it because of what the code said. It says if you, you know, it's talking about if you move out of state, well, it's the same difference if you've got your primary business in another state and you want a notary for the Tennessee. Or with our law, it has to say anything.
Uh, well, I've never really researched that question, but I'd have to really have to attach it to see.
It's something that don't come up very often. The one I know for sure, it's, it's, uh, it's not signed right.
Well, I amend my motion, and I make the motion to approve all of them except Michelle and Candace Turner.
Well, it's just a brand of term.
Okay, well, I amend it to approve all of them but those two, and if there are new ones anyway, let the weight of my. Your motion.
Second. Got a motion by Daniel and a second by Jeremy. Roll call.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
John Wood.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
U S Conans.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton. Daniel Leo.
Yes.
Yes.
Next is, uh, we've got one budget amendment that ain't, we'll get any more handed out after meeting the board. We've got one budget amendment from, uh, we take things in all, great facts, and figures.
Uh, this is a budget amendment for, uh, tourism grant that we received with Show Barn. You all probably saw some press on that. Um, we received the Tennessee Tourism Enhancement Grant from State of Tennessee back a couple of months ago. They awarded that to the county. And it's in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, and, uh, there is a match there, uh, of the county, and that match is eight thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars. So, uh, this budget amendment, uh, takes funds from the fund balance there of eight, uh, eight, three thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars, and puts it in the extension maintenance and repair services line, which is, uh, three thirty-five. Uh, that will allow us to start, uh, basically our plans are is to re-root the building. Uh, it's been leaking for probably decades. If the truth was known, uh, there's some new lighting, uh, a lot of the repairs that, that's needed out there. So we, we plan to use that and all of that one facility, that building, according to what they specified there in that grant. Uh, what this will do, once we spend the money and, and go through the county's process and bid process, uh, we have, uh, Southeast Tennessee Development District working on specs for the projects, uh, and different, uh, different sections of the project. So anything, I think, that goes above the five thousand dollar mark for it has to go out with bid at the county. Uh, those, those bids will go out. Of course, the Executive's Office will handle that and accept the bids and bring you all for awarding those bids as it, as it comes about. So the first thing, you know, we have to have the money in place, so, uh, this will be a reimbursable grant, and so when we spend those monies and the project is completed, the paperwork will go back to the state, and then the state will reimburse the county for those funds.
Just please make the number one, that's all I make, yeah. Make a motion, we approve this proposal.
I'll say.
Got a motion by James, a second by Daniel. Is there any more discussion?
Where does the money go when it's reimbursed?
It's getting back to town.
Where will it, where will it come back?
It, I think it only goes to general funds.
Any more discussion?
No.
I have a question, Greg. On, uh, the county, on the Show Barn itself, is that actually, i- i- is that a, it's, it's, the county itself owns the barn? Not UT or Extension or what?
County facility.
Okay, so.
We've always maintained it since the fifties when it was built, so.
So when these improvements are made and it can maybe actually look like something, would it be feasible to say that we might come up with a little, um, committee or of our own or something, like if we wanted to try to promote this, to bring in money for the county to do like weddings and events or anything like that, is that something that?
I mean, that, that's what was.
Everybody thinks that would be feasible?
That's what was in the grant, and that's how we wrote up the grant, is to, is to turn this into a, a center or a venue.
Right.
That can host other events, um, you know, if it wanted to be a wedding, if it wanted to be a concert, if it wanted to be craft shows, uh, anything like that.
That money, that money would go to the county?
Yeah.
That's how money would go to the one organizing the event.
One organizing the event.
The one that, uh, is actually caretaker and still plucking. Uh, Soul and Water right now has the designation. Y'all are generally over the operations of.
Well, what, what's happened in the past is, is anybody that uses the barn, you know, we do a nominal fee, like seventy-five dollars. Uh, for them to, you know, give them the key and maybe use the, use the barn and, uh, clean up, you know, a- after the event or something like that, and that just goes into, uh, our fund, direct extension office to buy a toilet paper light bulbs, you know.
But if we s- but if we started like making decent money with it.
They'd be talking about something bigger than the pullet show.
Yeah, something bigger than the chickens.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, to where, I understand what you're saying, we've got to cover the expenses and the general maintenance on it, which no matter how good it's fixed, there's always general, but I'm talking, if, if, let's just be, just be hap- be hopeful. And let's just say, you know, if it was bringing in fifteen hundred dollars a month or something, you know.
Yeah, it would be up to you all, isn't it?
Yeah.
Mentioned, I want to, I know like there's a committee for the records for the off field thing like that, is I don't think there's everything, anything ever been set up for the Show Barn itself.
Yeah. Okay.
Wheels, damn, wheels, me, a big deal.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I just think that once it looks like something, that they just might be a possibility.
Yeah, it's.
Of it generating some money for us, the county, you know, so, anyway, okay, question ended.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
John Wood.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
U S Conans.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Daniel Leo.
Yes.
Jeremy King.
Yes.
Next is, uh, be regulations, I want to remove that from the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, could I speak on that? We've got people in the audience that's was concerned on this issue, and if you don't care, I should try to let us speak on that. Uh, the footage was, it's two thousand seven thousand. Uh, from church to business, and y'all was wanting, thinking about shorting the footage, and we just had concerns. Churches have concerns on it, that they have, uh, voice, if that's okay.
Is it okay? First of all, I need to thank the commission for giving me just a few moments, and as much of a Baptist preacher can do, I will be brief. Uh, when, uh, my group is a member of our church, uh, stated that there might be a possibility this would come before us, uh, I immediately became greatly concerned. Um, as a public gathering place, which is what state law stipulates, it's not just for churches, it's for parks, uh, daycare facilities, aftercare ministries included, cemeteries, and I'm sure you know the law better than I. And given the fact that, uh, this is, uh, or would be located in a restaurant that would not even be open six months out of year. Uh, and, uh, third, that because, uh, revenues to the county on sale of beer, uh, is minimum at best. State of Tennessee has the highest excise tax on beer in the nation. Any beer that is produced, uh, imported, uh, or even crafted in, in the county would still pay the highest rate directly to national, you wouldn't, you would not get those funds directly. At best, uh, any revenue you would generate, uh, would again be a bare minimum. We stand firmly against any additional, uh, retail centers located anywhere near our churches, I can speak for churches, of course. I have been to other pastors, uh, above the mountains, and I was here, uh, in beautiful West Pope County, and, uh, I just want you to hear personally that we stand against this. Our congregation has become aware of this. Uh, you know, we're, we're pro-community, we try to fit in, help and what have you. And finally, in closing, I think it's, uh, a bit awkward, actually, I can't believe this is coming up. Within just a few weeks of, uh, our community grieving the loss of one of our honor students, eighteen years of age, uh, reportedly, uh, in, uh, in connection with open alcohol and hospital supplies. Uh, I think it's just unwise and, uh, quite honestly, in poor taste. And, uh, I appreciate your, uh, your permission to let me speak, and to know that we're praying for you, we want to serve this community as you do, but I feel this is totally unwise and totally unnecessary. Thank you for your time.
Well, I was just, uh, I mean, I was asked to look at that, and I've seen several members of your congregation drinking beer on Saturdays in Cleveland's restaurants, so I didn't think it'd be such a direct conflict, and I apologize.
Well, I see it too.
Moving on, uh, one and two dwelling opt-out resolution, make your opinion.
Somebody approved that, uh, this resolution, uh, like discussed at this beginning, and I believe this one will require a good focus to the central majority. Mr. Chairman, we have the copy of that resolution, please.
I think I slammed it. Yeah. Clean number, uh, nine and one. Resolution nine and one, eighteen, the resolution to opt-out statewide building code standards for one and two family dwellings in Pope County. Can you explain a little bit about that, John Wood? Four A is TCA code sixty-eight, one-twenty, one oh-one, authorizes counties to opt-out statewide building code standards for one family, two-family dwellings within the county's jurisdiction outside any municipality located within the county. within the county's jurisdiction outside any municipality located within the county. Whereas the board of county commissioners of Pope County has determined it is in best interest of citizens of the county for these standards not to apply to one family and two family dwellings within the county's jurisdiction outside any municipality located in the county. Now therefore be resolved by two thirds of vote of the board of county commissioners of Pope County. Meeting in regular session on this twentieth day of September two thousand eighteen. The statewide building code standards adopted pursuant to type sixty-eight, chapter one twenty shall not apply to one family and two family dwellings located within jurisdictional boundaries of Pope County outside any municipality located within the county. Be it further resolved, this resolution shall take effect on the twentieth day of September two thousand eighteen. Be it further resolved, the county clerk shall mail a certified copy of this resolution to the state fire market. Adopted this twentieth day, uh two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, that resolution has to be adopted. My understanding is the first commission meeting after a new commission is seated every twenty years. Yeah, so long as it becomes automatic, if the commission doesn't adopt it. Uh it's got some good things about it, it makes you have to have a certified builders, uh this and that, which I mean, on paper it looks great. Say most of y'all know good builders that are not certified builders. They have a business license, they have insurance, but they're not certified. There are several around, there's fewer viewers as time goes on. But these original codes had forty square foot. Uh when it first come out, you used to have forty square foot, although your house is already built. You had to get it inspected, you had it built by an inspector, I don't think you had a porch that was attached, next question, come up here and track it. Y'all, y'all have that part, you have to have certified builder to build front porch. Now there's three ways you can do the inspection, you have the inspector, the county can hire somebody to do the inspections, or you can contract it out to third party to do the standards. So if you have the resolution, what information is this matter?
So does this allow everybody to do what they want to?
It allows, it keeps on, it allows them to, if you pass this, they can do as they want to.
Alrighty.
Keep spiking it in, it's been working good so far.
You're not adopting the standards and adopting certified builders and inspectors. If you pass this.
This does, this doesn't affect uh subdivisions and things where they have different regulations, so it's just in everything outside the county. Or in the county.
Outside the county.
Yeah, it doesn't affect subdivision rates, and that's a probably different.
The plan commission does subdivision rates, which has nothing to do with actual structure of the house, when it's covered by these codes, it's too different.
Problem I have with this is you go to buy a house here, building, you gotta get inspected, because they're not gonna get you loan on it, they should get inspected and stuff. They come out, they look at it, they don't know what's behind the walls, they don't know how it was built, all they see is the external stuff. Nothing was inspected, nothing was done, nothing by whoever. And it passes inspection good, then you get in there and a few months later, stuff starts going wrong, the wiring goes wrong, because it wasn't wired right in the first place.
What you have a labor inspector, like, that's like well, you have to have a labor inspector. That's the one inspector will do that. Like we have Marshall, probably, actually two of them, a rough man at times.
What about plumbing?
Nope.
And what plumbing is special?
Get somebody you trust to do it.
That's, that's, that's why it works on a real, you know.
Exactly, yeah, we can't, yeah, I don't want nobody telling me who's gonna put my plumbing in.
I don't want to.
But I want to know when I buy it next year, so you can find somebody that can do it. And it was inspected, and it's, this.
When that bank sends out an inspector, though, do you, I tell you, I've, I've known too many people, they can honestly, how they do it, don't ask me. But if that house is not up to par, that, they won't loan the money. So the people that's buying the house after it's already been built and they've got to take out a loan on it, they're pretty well gonna be protected by that ins, that house inspection. I mean, you know, you may have a second, different opinion, if you do, that's fine, you know, but I'm just saying, I know of too many people that thought that their house was fine and then the bank sends out an inspector and he finds this little penny stuff and maybe stuff that is major. But still, there's too many people in Pope County that's gotta build things the way they can afford to build it. We're, we just can't have people coming in here telling us that that two before is not stout enough, so anyway, into my opinion.
Any more discussion? Roakow. Did you get something back?
I make a motion to approve the resolution, I know that's the one that I say.
I thought I didn't think, I thought y'all. Either way, I say it.
I thought it did.
I may not have, but I may have thought it my mind.
Roakow, Debbie Davis?
How am I supposed to vote on this? Is this approving, okay, yes. I'll make sure I got that right.
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Brad Brooks?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
DVS?
No.
Matty Johnson?
Yes.
David Gill?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Next is uh Tennessee Overhill, anybody here is over here?
I need to um.
Okay, well.
Ain't no shade with Roakow.
Yeah.
Come out later.
Okay, I seen that box, uh that's fine, uh we'll go back to Overhill and next is uh sheriff's office, please. I guess it's been shared rather.
We were requesting, we have one person that works in our place of all of our employees that is listed as administrative. And uh our, our goal at the sheriff's office is to be able to cross train all of our people and uh so that that way, no matter what happens, uh we can, we can put people where we need them. And uh we were requesting that that one administrative position be moved over to the corrections side. And uh then the, the money for that part be moved over and then do away with the administrative position. That way, I know that there's been a lot of questions about this and all, the, the point of it is, the difference in corrections and even deputies, everybody at my place has to be certified either in corrections or as a deputy sheriff. And um to, to put somebody at any other position beside of that position is a, uh is a no-no. I can't send anybody back to the jail, just anybody into the jail to work, I can't put anybody in a patrol car just to work. Um so we're requesting to be able to do that, so that that way, if somebody calls in sick, if, worst case scenario, we have to have somebody in court or if there's an incident in the back, we have one more person we can send to the back. And send into the jail.
So is this money already allotted in your amount that you're already getting?
All but about four thousand dollars, I think it's forty-one hundred dollars is allotted for and we'll, we'll, we'll just see, I think the budget will carry it. But we'll, we'll have to see on that, but, yes.
Sheriff, me and you talked about this before, but right now, we're in trouble, we're in trouble because of the county. Is she doing the balance check across on the state inmates, the money coming in and numbers going to the state?
Yes, yes.
So she's doing that part?
Yeah, she's, she's raising silent all the bills and things like that for the jail at this point already. And also doing all the ordering and things for the jail and going through all the POs and such, yes.
Is that a full-time job there or does she have time to go to the back and work?
It, it's a full-time job, uh but in our, in, in our job, priorities is the jail and, and the road. Uh if something happens in the jail, the more the merrier when you, if, if there's something going on in the back, the more the merrier. And especially if it's a female, we have, uh I know you, uh the, the commission approved a couple of years ago for us to uh have an increase in our population. That, most of that increase was in the female population, we're running about a little over fifty females in our jail right now every day. And that's uh at night, there's one female officer on usually and during the day, two.
So will she be making the same amount that the actual people in the back's gonna be making?
Yes, it, it just be, she'd be listed as a correctional officer.
No more than that.
This has a lot to do with that last two hours of uh the CTA strength that sometimes complicated where the two come in, deal with the staff and improve their jails and work hours. With sheriff's offices, CTA brought out here three, four year ago. A lot of this has to do with that internal controls issue that they were talking about.
I make a motion to approve Sheriff Ross's request.
I'll say it.
Any more discussion?
I got one thing, um how much of pay difference is it gonna be?
It's a four thousand dollars, four, forty-one hundred dollars a year.
Increase?
Yes. Well, you.
I do have, I've got my reasons, I'm, I'm sure everybody does, but I've had other county employees call me, you know, uh they feel like this will be a raise and they're, I don't know why they're not moving it.
And, and I, and I understand that commissioner, and, and I'm not minimizing anybody else's position.
I know.
But when you're, when you're working either in the jail or on the road, it's, it's a certification that you have to have.
Well, you say what I'm.
I do, I do so, I, I do, I, I totally understand it and, and I hate that there's, that, that the hard feelings are there, or the miscommunications or whatever, there's been a lot of rumors about this that, that just weren't true. But uh it's, it is what it is.
Well, when I talked to Amanda a little bit about it, you know, which I didn't know her, I never met the girl, but she, when I asked her to explain kind of the situation. And the way she told me was also, you know, she said, there's days that I don't see daylight with my bookwork. And then I might go for a week or two and I might get called up to where I've got extra time. And I said, so, okay, then what you're telling me is that when you've got extra time, you won't be wasting it if, if you're given this so-called promotion. You'll be working in the back and you'll be doing things to subsidize, you know, to make up for your slack time. I said, because I don't believe in slack time. I said, I've never done nothing but hard manual labor and I believe in everybody working for their dog. So I said, that sounds good to me, you're gonna be doing a double duty, and she said, yeah. And I said, okay, so that means that you're gonna actually, probably gonna be working harder because you're gonna be getting a pay raise, so you're gonna need to be working harder to justify it, because everybody's gonna be mad. And she said, yeah, I, it, it, it's, it should all be to the benefit of everybody. And I said, well, see this how, I don't know a thing about how all of it's run, I'm gonna take your word for it. But anyway, so that was our discussion, if that helps anybody.
So what percentage of the time would she be doing this position, just under emergencies or?
It, it depends, I, I, to be able to tell you an exact percentage, I, I couldn't, I, I couldn't tell you because uh, you know, if we have criminal court and, and we need somebody, an extra person, criminal court, if you've ever been, attended Pope County Criminal Court, it's, it's a circus. And uh lots of people running around and uh inmates are there, and anyway. Uh this, I know it's, it seems like it's all about the money, it's not all about the money, it's about me being able to move people where we need them.
So why can't we just send her to the free training and then wait until other more to even increase her pay? Because I mean, if you're needing that kind of person, why don't we just send her to the free training?
What free training?
The, the, the training is free.
Is, is, is it fair to, to, to her?
Well, she's not gonna be doing it full-time, I mean, so I mean, it's not.
Okay.
Sheriff, this corrections training is free.
Yes, yes.
It is free.
Yes, yes, sir.
Post is still, but cost.
Yes, sir, yeah, the deputies have to post forty hours, or excuse me, ten week training is uh for deputies, is right around twenty-five hundred dollars. And then the uh one week course for corrections is, is free.
So what are you gonna do with, if she's in the, in the correction part and you're leaving your secretary, what are you gonna do?
I guess I'm gonna sit down on my pants and go to work.
I notice you got a, they appropriated a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for overtime in the, in the correctional part of your budget. That's about almost thirty thousand dollars higher than it has been in previous.
We asked it for actual numbers this last budget here, just to pull it out of the fund office at the end of the year, which you look at your ended budgets, brought it way up after the state finally finished going over and determined a year. So we asked it for actual numbers, and I'm hoping he gave it to us.
We, we, we try our best to do that, but at the same time, Mr. Mr. Woody, you know what, what this, the, you've been on the commission before and you know the sheriff's office, if we have a sequester jury, that's, that's twenty-four hour day overtime for at least four people. And it's, so we, we can't say yes, we, we definitely will not go over this amount because you never know what's gonna happen. If there's a, if there's a disaster, uh we had the, we had the tornadoes that cost us a lot of overtime and we were, uh we didn't question it, I didn't question it, I decided to bite the bullet and I sent them out there and said, we'll worry about this later. So that's, the increases also, we had, we've got four more correctional officers than we had as well.
What about your correctional officers that uh would be, could get overtime, but they won't because of this crossover?
I mean, I can't, I just save about five bucks an hour.
But what are, what are your employees gonna affect them?
I hope they get four days off.
How's it gonna affect them?
I hope they get four days off, I, there, there's still gonna be overtime out there, you're, we're never gonna get away from that.
I, like everybody else, uh I think there's a lot of misunderstanding and I had several people approach me in the last day or two. I would recommend to everybody else, this table is for one month and let you clarify. Would anybody has any question? I don't think anybody that contacted me is actually at the meeting, and if you can clarify that, that's just my suggestion, y'all don't vote, we'll vote. There are just a lot of misunderstandings. And, but it's up to y'all.
Squeeze the chopper.
I can already have a second. You can move it, anybody made a motion wants to amend it. Any more discussion? Roakow.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Tom Hope Vivinger?
Yes.
James Woody?
No.
Brad Brooks?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
DVS?
Yes.
Matty Johnson?
Yes.
David Gill?
No.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
DVS through now.
Let's see, we'll go uh back to the Overhill, is anybody Tennessee Overhill here tonight?
Yes. Commissioners, my name is Durant Tullup and I'm the chairman of the board of the Tennessee Overhill. And I know some of you are new and uh so I wanted to explain a few things. First of all, I was kind of surprised when I looked in the newspaper and saw that the partnership that we've had with Pope County and Monroe McMinn, that Pope County had chosen not to fund the Tennessee Overhill for this year, five thousand dollars. Wanted to explain a little bit about the Tennessee Overhill and then I want to talk to you about the economic impact that we have. First of all, the Tennessee Overhill Heritage Association began in nineteen ninety, I'll try to make this brief, thirty years ago, formed a partnership when the southeast Tennessee counties of McMinn, Monroe and Pope were selected as a pilot program for the National Trust of Historic Preservation Heritage Tourism Initiative. Uh at that time, a group of, a diverse group of people, organizations, government agencies serving the three county areas came together to build a, a different type of tourism program built on regionalism. One that honored local history, traditions, cultures and natural resources. The early visionaries and ones that we have today include museum directors, business owners, artists, outdoor enthusiasts, tourism professionals, managers of public lands, farmers, civic volunteers and ordinary people that love to call this at home. That being said, we formed thirty years ago. And we came up with a formula in which Polk County's portion of that would be five thousand dollars. And that money was gonna be used to join the other two counties to put together something that one county can't do by themselves. So we took all that money together and we used some expertise with us and some other people to leverage that in order to produce hundreds of thousands of dollars of advertisement and economic benefits. Something that one county can't do by themselves. Very important that we stick together because all of us don't have everything that there is. So we've been at the forefront of that. I wanted to talk a little bit about the economic impact. For one thing, we put together a lot of brochures. This particular one, and I think Gerald, our director, sent a copy of this to you all. This is our most popular piece that we have, which is our visitors guide. It goes out. We sent out about fifty thousand of these a year. Very expensive to produce. We spent tens of thousands of dollars promoting the Polk County and the other counties. In this particular one where you see the green little strips there on the side, out of this brochure, yes.
Who does your friend?
Who does your friend? Your friend.
Promote?
Derek Mewa.
McMinn County?
McMinn County.
Yeah, we go on.
Okay. I know you like to say McMinn County's the biggest, but I'm gonna go pretty, okay. That's not, I'm not, actually, it goes out to bid though. And anybody that wants to bid, we do have to bid. But out of this brochure, twenty-seven of the items in here are from Polk County. Thirty-one of the pictures in here are from Polk County. So Polk County is highly, highly pushed on this. We have a board of directors. First of all, on the board of directors, you have out of Polk County, I think, I think I have the name stripped down here. Yeah, we have representing you all, this Ken Rush from Ducktown. We have Kenny Godfrey, G. Thomason, Adrian Lambert, and Harold Webb are the representatives from Polk County to make sure our money is spent evenly, correctly, and done in a proper manner. Every county gets some representation, equal representation. We also have the waterfall brochure, and out of this waterfall brochure, I think we have ten of our waterfall brochures. We produced twenty-five thousand of these since the year before last. We're now printing up twenty-five thousand more because there is so much demand. Ten of these are in Polk County. So we highlight that. These are also some of our other things that we produce. The Native American brochure for Tennessee Overhill. Of course, the Washtere River Railroad Adventure that goes to Copper Hill. First, the factory and the bike trails that are all, go throughout the entire county. The economic impact of this. And these are also brochures that we put out that we didn't print, but come directly from Polk County. There's quite a few there. We give those out daily. We mail them out constantly. The tourism business, first of all, from two thousand thirteen to two thousand sixteen, has continued to grow in the three county area. It's grown to thirteen point three five million dollars. Eleven percent of that for the Overhill region overall. Specifically, Polk County receives a benefit in tourist dollars of three point four million dollars. So by advertising and doing the work that we do promoting outside of this area, because most of our is the great people into this area, it has come up to eleven point four percent for Polk County. The trains alone, the trains alone produce a tremendous amount of income for Polk County, not McMinn County. It produces, first of all, the train servicing that we have done here is spent, the money spent in Polk County alone is forty-nine thousand dollars. The bus contracts, which come strictly from Polk County, is eighty-six thousand dollars. This is per year. The fuel for the trains comes from Polk County, thirty-nine thousand dollars per year.
The contract, the buses, are you figuring that as profit, eighty-six thousand dollars?
That money comes directly, it's an impact to a business that's here in Polk County. The drivers, it's the drivers that are getting that, they're getting thirty-nine thousand dollars a year.
But eighty-six thousand?
Eighty-six thousand is the best contracts.
Are you figuring out the whole number?
I figure that's the number that we pay to our, for the contract that goes here.
Are you allowing for, why you do the fuel, insurance, working comp? So that's not all profit?
No, that's what we do. That's what we do right there. Not all this is gonna be profit. This is economic impact. You know, there's costs that come out of this, a bit like there's any business. The electricity and water, thirty-one hundred dollars we pay Polk County. For total, the hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, right there on expenses just from the train. Then you take the amount of money, we take passengers to Copper Hill and drop them off in the Copper Hill for two and a half hours where they get to eat and spend money. They spend approximately eighty-two thousand dollars.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Cause the Blue Ridge train runs every day.
Right.
And there's also locals.